We'll ask for a motion to reconvene out of recess.
I move it.
You say motion to adjourn?
No, reconvene. Nice try. We have a motion by trustee Jensen.
Second.
The second by trustee Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are reconvened. Thank you all for sharing and the celebration and the cake. And apparently, we didn't get to eat John's face after all. So, don't worry, there's still time.
Take care of the freezer and eat it on the one-year anniversary of tonight's. Isn't that a tradition or something?
It'll be in the freezer. All right. Back to our board meeting. We have the next item on our agenda is public comments on any agenda items. Now, this is the first of two opportunities that you'll have to address the board. So, anyone that would wish to address the board tonight on any of the agenda items, feel free to come up to the podium and state your name and your case. Anyone at all? All right. We have, the next opportunity will come up towards the end of our agenda. I have nothing for the mayor's report tonight. And now, it's time for trustee reports. First is our absent trustee Gus. Does anyone have a report on his behalf? All right. Then we will move on to trustee Jensen. What have you got for us today?
Mayor, I've only one item. The next finance committee meeting will be October 16th at 6:00 PM upstairs. Cub Scouts are welcome. If they want to learn about public finance.
There won't be cake, trust me. There will not be cake. Okay.
Not with him in charge.
There will not be McRib either. That's all I have.
All right. Trustee Miller?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Firstly, I'd like to make mention that the origination of the Complete Count Committee, that's for the census, to raise census awareness, was held on September 11th. And we had representatives from all sectors of Lake County. We had the Beach Park School District, the New Tech High School District, Benton Township, Beach Park, and Newport Fire Protection Districts, representatives from local businesses such as Emily's Restaurants, and nonprofits such as Lake County Grandparent and Kinns Raising Children, Mono a Mono Family Resource Center, and faith-based organizations, Our Lady of Humility, and the Word of Life Ministries, just to name a few. These people all had very busy schedules. We're most appreciative that they took time out to join us here to talk about the importance of the 2020 Census. We did have an individual from the United States Census Bureau who attended and gave a brief presentation on just a variety of census data. And the committee will meet again in October on the 9th, 3:30 PM, to continue our discussions on how to best encourage participation in this most important constitutional event coming up only once every 10 years. So, secondly, on our administrator's report, I wanted to call out the fact that the Village of Beach Park has been selected to be part of a documentary video about the Soul Smart Foundation and program. And Soul Smart is a solar, is it, Jerry, is it a nationwide program? Yes. And this is, we have been selected as one of the Chicago-area communities to be part of the video. And as part of what they're doing, they will also feature a solar installation in our own community. So, that's kind of exciting.
And I have to say that I went to the interview that they held with our community development director. And there was a discussion that there might be a little interview and camera time and that.
Oh, that's why you want.
Yeah.
I had no idea how long we would be videotaping and questions and answers and trying to say things correctly. So, I'd like to thank Jerry personally for that opportunity. But in all seriousness, what we did is we went out to a 60-panel, 18-kilowatt solar display that we have, ground-mounted display that was installed at one of our residences here in the village. And actually, I really enjoyed spending time with the crew that came out to videotape it. And they're going around to other communities, not in, just in Illinois. They're covering several in the nation. And so, it was quite an honor to be selected for that. And they're going to make, you know, the two hours we spent together will probably be like eight seconds on the video. But they're also going to do a video that we can use on our website
Oh, good.
to help promote our solar programs and to encourage other communities. That's kind of where the goal was, so.
Well, do let us know when that airs.
Yes, I'm sure it'll air on our website somewhere.
It won't be on.
It'll be on the interweb somewhere, yes.
Well, I think it's important to also mention that Beach Park was selected as one of standout communities that participate in these solar programs. So, we're very pleased with that.
Yeah, one little detail. We have more than 60 solar installations in Beach Park. Try to find them. That's the fun part, because, you know, you look around and if they're roof-mounted, most of the time, you can't even tell they're there, so.
Okay.
All right.
And then, last thing I'd like to mention, there's, Kenosha Road is going to be realigned. I think people may have noticed there's been some activity up there for the last couple of months. The new route for Kenosha Road has been laid out. There's trees that have been removed. Excavation has begun. There's still a lot to be done. But this is a project that's been long in the making, so we are pleased to see it finally coming to fruition. And thanks a lot to John for his efforts with that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Aderson, what have you got?
Speaking of thanks to John, did you guys know that if you have a VCR or a computer or a TV that you're trying to get rid of, that there's a dumpster at our Public Works facility free of charge to drop those things during the hours of 8:00 to 3:00? One of the things that our soon-to-be former nickel-pinching administrator negotiated into our garbage contract, the, for the whole year, not just special occasions, but we always have that electronics recycling dumpster. And he kept the favorite feature that a lot of people have, our spring cleanup, included that in the contract at no extra charge to village residents, you know, just as a benefit. So, that's one of the many things that he does in the background. We're thinking about making a sign calling it the John Kinzeth Memorial Electronics Recycling Dumpster or something like that. But the sign that they made is probably better, so. So, just in case you missed it, anytime from 8:00 to 3:00 over at the Village, the Public Works Facility on Glendale, corner of 27th and Glendale. And that was all I had to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Sidik, what have you got today?
Don't report tonight, thank you.
All right. Trustee Wells?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one item. Bondage from the Illinois Natural History Survey will be visiting several ravines in Beach Park from September of 2019 until October of 2020. We will be conducting biological, a settlement with the main goal of developing a composite plant species for each ravine. Usually, three people will be visiting each ravine, as most of, all of the ravines in the village are on private property. Village is acting a state for a plan to notify the residents ahead of their visits. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. All right. I think, since it's John's last administrator's report, John, did you have anything that you wanted to share with us?
Certainly, off the, not of the normal report, the statement that I would like to say and would like to thank the mayor and board and the residents of Beach Park for the opportunity to serve in this role over the nearly seven years that I have been here. Certainly, as the mayor indicated, I have personally grown during this time, certainly learned, made some mistakes along the way, but certainly hoping, hope to have left the community in a better place than it was seven years ago. When I first got here to Beach Park, I wasn't married and didn't have children, didn't wear glasses, and didn't have gray hair. And certainly, over the last seven years, have done all those things and gotten those things. But I, and not sure which ones to credit to Beach Park, but certainly have enjoyed my time here and couldn't ask to work for a more dedicated and sincere mayor and board that has the ultimate genuine goal of serving the community and doing what's right for the community. Sometimes, that does require tough decisions. And certainly, there are times when there is going to be a negative impact, for one, over the benefit of many. But time again and again, that mayor and board has made those decisions, many times not because of their own desire to. You know, I think the one that's coming is the recreational cannabis, you know, is a decision that the state made that ultimately was, is forcing this mayor and board to make a decision on what to do locally. Same thing, there was video gaming, and a long list of those types of things that have come down from the state and our societal changes that this board has been put in the place to deal with. And certainly, having the opportunity to serve and provide some support role and guidance for each of those has been my honor and privilege. Working with the staff here, the thing that I've learned is that, it sounds cliche, but, you know, certainly, the staff of the Village of Beach Park is very much like a family and always has been. It was that way when I got here and certainly feel that it is that way when I'm leaving. The staff all genuinely gets along. We all pull together. There is no organizational silos that many other organizations have that, you know, it's not my job, it's not my department. We don't have that problem in Beach Park. You make a phone call, generally speaking, you know, you might not necessarily be talking to the person that will take care of the problem. Somebody will find you that person and ultimately, the problem gets taken care of, whether it's somebody's role or not. And that's the benefit of working for a small organization is that everybody gets exposed to everything. And certainly, Beach Park has been the dream job, if I can say it that way, for a person such as myself, starting out in this career, in this profession. And certainly, over the last seven years, I've spent more time here in Beach Park than I have with my own family and the community that I actually live in. And so, I do feel that, you know, I have, Beach Park is more of my identity than the community that I actually live in. I often tell my wife that I probably do spend more time with my coworkers than I do with her. And that really is a real thing. But I have enjoyed every minute of it. And certainly, even though I may be leaving now, I know that life is not linear and, you know, I do hope to come back at some point to Beach Park and certainly will be continuing to pay attention and hoping for the best things for Beach Park. And will provide support and guidance to the staff that is still here for problems that are similar, even though I'm going to a different community. You know, it's going to be likely tasked and facing the same challenges that Beach Park either has had or currently has. So, certainly, we'll continue to work with the staff here to resolve those problems and those concerns. Again, I do thank you for providing me with the privilege and the honor of serving this community for as long as I have.
Thank you.
Now, before we move on, I have some mundane business.
Undane?
Regarding the manager's report. You mentioned in here that you met with Verizon regarding the small cell 5G program. Do you have any feeling as to how many and where are those things going to be? Is it too early in the process?
It's still early in the process and transparency. I personally was not in that meeting. I knew this transition was coming. And so, Adrian, the Public Works Director, and Jerry, the Community Development Director, and some of the other staff are the ones that met with Verizon. It was an introductory meeting. And I believe that they were talking potentially later this year, by the end of the year. They're looking to have an agreement in place. I don't think there was any indication of number of sites identified, but what I will say is this is only one company. Every company will come through the door and do it the same way. So, we met with Verizon, but AT&amp;T is likely coming, US Cellular, Sprint, T-Mobile, and many other carriers. And so, you could be talking to the tunes of hundreds of sites throughout the village. But it is something that, you know, this is the new 5G rollout, if I can say it that way. And the village has good regulations in place. We adopted the model IML ordinances. We set the fees to the state limit. And so, certainly, any impact in the community, whether it's visually or even safety-wise with the additional poles and the right-of-way, all of those, you know, we've done everything we can to minimize and then the most to capitalize on it, if I can say it that way.
Yeah, you answered my second question. That is, the next shoe is how many of these carriers are we going to see? We're going to have to reinforce our poles with all the small cells on them. Thanks, John. That's all I have here.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have our consent agenda. We have several items, so I'll read them off. We have the annual treasures report for fiscal year ending April 30th of 2019. The comprehensive annual financial report and audit for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2019. The finance report for August of 2019. The public safety report. We have an ordinance authorizing the sale or disposal of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Beach Park. And we have authorization of payment to B's Underground Technologies for Pay Application Number Two for SSA 14 in the amount of $56,365. Is there anything that the board would have us consider separately from this list? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
We have a motion by trustee Miller?
Second.
Second by trustee Aderson. Discussion? There being none. Item E would be ordinance number 25. Roll call, please.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Aderson?
Aye.
Trustee Sidik?
Aye.
Trustee Wells?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, on to the single longest list of resolutions and ordinances that I have probably ever seen unless there was an omnibus move. I don't.
We're going to need another recess before this.
I'm going to have to, yeah, maybe a couple of breaks in the middle of this or something. There's quite a list, so we'll just take them from the top to the bottom. First, trustee Aderson, it looks like you've got a couple.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to prolong the agony, I have chosen to read each contract word for word. So, get comfortable. The first one is authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between us and the Village of Wadsworth for some snow plowing services. We've done this in the past. It's a time-saving effort on, for both organizations. There's a few areas where our guys go past Wadsworth streets to get to some of our streets, and they go past some of our streets to get to some of their streets. So, it's worked out fairly well in the past for us to just plow their streets for them and have them plow our streets in those small areas, some of the remote funny boundary areas. So, I guess the wording of this is authorization to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Wadsworth for trading responsibility for snow and ice control on certain streets in each municipality.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, a motion by trustee Aderson, second by trustee Sidik. Any discussion? This one's fairly routine. Roll call, please.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Aderson?
Aye.
Trustee Sidik?
Aye.
Trustee Wells?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next thing is something we've been discussing for quite a while. At the last Public Works Committee meeting, we came to a consensus and therefore recommended bringing it to the board. There's an ordinance amending section 10.08.010 of the municipal code regarding parking provisions within the village. What we're doing basically is having the municipal code about parking on the streets mirror the intent of the ordinance for private property, the ordinance for private property for the same commercial vehicles parking on private property. We decided it was, there were several areas where this cleans up problems. There is detailed descriptions of the size and the license plate designations of the vehicles. So, it's basically just having the municipal code match the ordinance for private property to the same vehicle. The zoning, yeah, right. That's what I mean, the zoning ordinance. So, I will put that in the form of an order, a motion to approve the ordinance amending that section of the code regarding parking provisions.
Second.
Motion by trustee Aderson, second by trustee Miller. Discussion?
Mayor, I got a couple of questions regarding the definition language. 3B, section 3B references, any vehicle with a sign is considered commercial. Would that, but then 3, I'm sorry, section 2 exempts Class C pickups?
Right.
Or Class D, sorry, pickups. However, under 3B, if that pickup said, for instance, "Hecker Electric" on the side of it, then it might fall under that other definition.
I think, so take them in order. If it's a commercial vehicle, then section 2 describes where commercial vehicles and what sizes, and that can be where. And then, section 3 is clarifying what a commercial vehicle is, so.
Yeah, right. It seems to be eternally inconsistent, at least how I read it. And first, now, if the Molly-made lady that lives next door, I don't have one, but say she did, that would also, under that.
It would be a commercial vehicle.
It would be a commercial vehicle.
But it wouldn't be prohibited from parking because it wouldn't be greater than a Class B or over the certain weight classification, et cetera. So.
Well, if I'm, well, if you read section 1, it does prohibit commercial vehicle parking. And then, if that's classified as a commercial vehicle, then it falls under the language of section 1.
In section 1, it is referring to the section of the municipal code, and we're amending that section. And under F, parking of commercial vehicles, buses, it's unlawful to park, for example, a school bus within public streets.
Well, no, yeah, but I'm looking, I'm looking at a bus, Roman I, section Roman I, I'm sorry, not I.
Right. And that is basically introducing the changes that are listed from F below.
Okay, I recognize that. And I'm just struggling with the definition of "commercial vehicle," that's all.
Okay, so normally, in an ordinance, we'd have a definition section that would say "commercial vehicles are." What we've actually done is that it's incorporated as a clarifying point as opposed to going back elsewhere in the municipal code and saying, "Well, this is a commercial vehicle." We're actually including that in the section of the, that we're addressing it, so.
I understand the intent, I'm just not thrilled with the language.
I understand. And I can see where you might be concerned because it's coming after the prohibition of commercial vehicles. But it does, it say for operator of, or owner of a commercial vehicle licensed and classified in excess of a B plate. So, Molly-made wouldn't be in excess of a B plate or 8,000 pounds gross weight, which that wouldn't cover. And then, it goes further to accept, shall not apply to pickup-style vehicles with licensed designations of D, commonly used as a passenger vehicle. So, we're going through that whole description. And then, after that, for the clarifying, "commercial vehicles," so if it doesn't have a sign on it, then it's not a commercial vehicle if it's above a Class B and the like. So, for that specific explanation, if it has the sign, then it's no question. I see what you're saying.
I've read this many times, so you don't need to read it to me, but it just, it doesn't, it doesn't square as I read it. I don't care how many times I read it. I can't make it work. I get, I understand the intent completely.
What about this? What if that section read, "For purposes of clarification, commercial vehicle may include," rather than "shall mean," "may include," which would take in section 2?
That makes it harder to enforce, I would think. Then it's subjective.
No, section 2 defines what a commercial vehicle is. The next section helps to further clarify.
Well, I guess in my question is, again, Molly-made's a good example. Those are typically private vehicles. They slap a magnetic sign on the side and go to work. Under this definition, could they park in front of their house?
Yes. They could park on the street.
Because that, under 3, that is now a commercial vehicle. We're basically defining it there in 3.
We're defining what can qualify as a commercial vehicle. And then, in section 2, it says that a commercial vehicle must meet these things to be prohibited. So, in other words, if it's.
So, you're saying 3 is a subset of 2?
It's a clarification of 2. I think that was the intent, John.
Right. The village is not prohibiting commercial vehicles from parking on a street unless they are plated higher than a B and except for the exception created for D. So, a commercial vehicle can park on the village street if it's a B plate or less. We have contractors throughout the village that bring home pickup trucks, vans, you know, those types of passenger-style commercial vehicles, that it would still be permitted to be parked on the street because those vehicles all typically have a B plate. So, this ordinance is a, this ordinance follows the guidelines. Arlington Heights and Des Plaines are the, where this ordinance came from. So, certainly, it is something that's in place elsewhere, and that's for the creation of this ordinance.
I'd have the same question if I were in Arlington Heights, so.
So, I think to the point, though, that the commercial vehicles are, continue to be permitted on village streets as long as they're not plated higher than a B plate. And a Molly-made vehicle have a Class B, a normal passenger plate, as would a van, as would a pickup truck. The things that would exceed that would be the 1-ton duly trucks and then a number of other commercial vehicles.
So, if the introduction of item 3 were to reference back to 2, vehicle described above.
Okay, so, "For purposes of clarification of item 2."
Yeah, something like that.
Commercial vehicles, so.
Then I'm fine with it. Then it makes sense. One other question that I can't, I got to ask. Under 2C, I'm sorry, 3C, it references First Division and Second Division. What in the world does that mean?
I'm sorry, you're under.
3 child, please see.
See?
Motor vehicles of the quote "First Division," remodeled, et cetera, as motor vehicles of the Second Division. I don't know what that's referencing.
Do we have any clarification from staff?
I do not specifically know what that's referencing to. That is really for, again, these definitions came from other model ordinances.
Then I'd recommend striking that if we don't know what it means.
And John, quick question. Can you go back to your statement just before this last question about 3/4-ton and full-ton trucks?
Right.
There's no prohibition on pickup trucks up to and including a D plate?
Correct. We created an exception. We know that a number of our.
You mentioned.
We know that a number of our residents on the, in the village do drive pickup-style duly's or 3/4, 1-ton trucks, and that's why the exception was created for a D-plated pickup truck. So, the, excuse me, the definition of the First Division is for carrying up to 10 passengers, and the Second Division would be beyond 10 passengers.
So, that would be, okay, so. Motor vehicles designed for pulling or carrying freight or cargo, and those motor vehicles with the First Division remodeled for use and used as motor vehicles of the Second Division. So, this is a passenger-carrying vehicle that that's referring to?
Correct.
Yes, sir. Okay. Does that help?
These definitions.
These are state, these are state license designations.
Yes, these are.
Are state licensed?
These are state classifications. And the reason those definitions are included is we've had problems with semi-tractors. That's why you have the semi-tractors included. We're also prohibiting school buses that are not in use. And so, that definition is trying to distinguish between school buses, semi-tractors, other commercial vehicles, whether they have two axles, three axles, whether they include the trailer, don't include the trailer. We've also had problems with commercial equipment, and that's why that's included, where a person might leave a trailer without the vehicle at all. And so, we've tried to include and capture as many of the problems that we've had with this ordinance.
I'm fully in support of your intent. I'm just, it's just the language I'm struggling with. Okay, I've said my piece, Mayor.
Well, I believe there was a request in your discussion and that we had come to for the purposes of clarification of item 2 above.
Of item 3, right. The introduction of 3, right.
So, if we have a motion and a second, would the mover and the seconder consent to adding language after the item 3 for purpose of clarification of item 2 above? And then, "Commercial equipment shall include," is that?
I will amend my motion to include those words.
And I will agree with his amendment.
We have consent by both.
The Don Jensen amendment will hold.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion on this topic? Overall? Overall, we have had ongoing issues with commercial vehicles being parked that aren't there to do work, so if you have a tradesman, you know, this specifically excludes deliveries and tradesmen, and, you know, contractors, or whatever it might be, that are there for a purpose. It's, the goal of this is more to remove long-term parking of commercial vehicles from the village streets, and to mirror the similar limitations that are placed in our zoning ordinance for what is appropriate in a residential district as well. So, if there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Trusty Sidik.
Aye.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Trusty Millard.
Aye.
Motion carries, that is ordinance number 27. And moving, and, Trusty Wells, looks like you've got a few. You're gonna be busy tonight. How's your voice?
We'll find out. First, I have for your consideration, is an ordinance amending chapter 9.40 of the Beach Park Village Code entitled Solicitor, Peddler, and Camberson Registration. And this is basically, this amendment is a housecleaning item. The purpose of the ordinance is to change, to reflect the current staff members' position, title, and the current operational procedures in effect by the village. And again, I entertain this in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Trusty Wells, second by Trusty Addison, and this is just cleaning up some, removing an old title and installing a current title for our staff. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trusty Sidik. Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Trusty Millard.
Aye.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Motion carries, that's ordinance number 28.
Next, we have an ordinance amending 5.02.090 of the Beach Park Village Code entitled Fire and Safety Inspections. Purpose of this ordinance is changed to reflect the current operational procedures that staff use during inspections of non-residential buildings and structures, and any multifamily residential buildings with common areas. And this went before the planning, building planning and zoning committee, and recommended approval, and I entertain this in the form of a motion.
We have a motion by Trusty Wells.
Second.
Second by Trusty Miller, discussion?
One language question, Mayor.
Sure.
I'm looking at the second page, under new 5.02.090. There's a verb in there, in the third line, beginning of the third line, "authorized." I don't know who's authorizing, is the business authorizing, or the building authorizing the village inspections? Does this, there's no noun to go with that verb.
I think it's the first three subjects, business, businesses, business buildings, and any non-residential building structures, I guess 4, and any multifamily residential buildings with common areas. So, it's gotta be the ownership of those that authorize.
So, the individuals, the owners, or.
Yeah, the owner entity, yeah.
The building itself isn't authorizing the action.
Well, no. Clearly not.
All right. Did you have a recommended change here, just to?
I'm not the Scrivener here.
All right, well, that guy, I tell ya, if I find him.
It's just, you have a verb without a agreeing noun, that's all.
Ah. He is the grammar Nazi.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can, you could easily remedy that, I suppose.
Well, then, his copy just add "the owners of."
Exactly.
Well, and it's, it could be, I'm thinking, just 'cause the. I mean, a business is a corporation, that can authorize something.
I got that, right.
Then, when you get into a building, it's gotta be the ownership. Non-residential building would be the ownership. Same thing for multifamily residential, so business, businesses, and ownership, and owners of, maybe that, businesses and owners of business buildings, non-residential buildings. Maybe that's, that's the fix.
All right, now, we're back to, the original mover was Larry.
Larry, okay.
Do you concur with the language adjustment?
I concur with the language adjustment, as stated.
As do I.
We have concurrence. Any other discussion on this topic? Quit, you're laughing back there, you better be watching funny videos, or I'm gonna talk to you, lady. That's my wife, for those of you that don't know. I'm gonna make you go outside. All right, roll call, please.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Trusty Millard.
Aye.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Trusty Sidik.
Aye.
Motion carries, that is ordinance number 29.
Next, we have for your consumption, an ordinance approving the petition of Michael Magnuski to extend the conditional use permit for an automobile service use in the Shore Road Corridor Overlay District at 9902, 9962 Beach Road. And Mr. Magnuski has applied for original conditional use permit in 2015. The original conditional use permit was granted for two years, and could be extended to two years timeframe for up to six years. This current two-year time period will take the conditional use permit to November the 1st of 2021. This six-year timeframe is what was originally agreed to by the petitioner in 2015, and also reaffirms, reaffirmed at the September 5th, 2019 Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The village has no problems at its property over the previous four years, and this did go before the Planning, Planning and Zoning Committee, and we recommend the approval.
So, we have a motion by Trusty Wells.
I entertain it in the form of a motion.
There's the motion.
Second.
Second by Trusty Miller, discussion?
I think that's the key statement in there, that the village has had no problems at this property over the previous four years. That's the reason we do this type of thing with the two-year extensions, because some, in the past, we've had problems with them, so that, I think speaks volumes, that there hasn't been any issues, so I support it.
Very good. Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Trusty Millard.
Aye.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Trusty Sidik.
Aye.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Next, we have an ordinance approving the petition of the village of Beach Park for a zoning map amendment from SR Suburban Residential District to B1 Business District at 38836 Green Bay Road. The purpose of this zoning map amendment is to place this whole frontage along Green Bay Road at Chaplin Avenue on the same B1 zoning district, which is consistent with our comprehensive plan, and also takes the one-owner properties from the case of split zoning, SR, B1, to all B1 zoning. This will assist not only the owner and marketing of this property for economic development, but also the village. And again, this was discussed at the Building Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, and recommended for approval. And basically, it's designed to promote and increase economic development. I entertain it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion by Trusty Wells.
Second.
Second by Trusty Sidik, discussion? Being known, roll call, please.
Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Trusty Millard.
Aye.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Trusty Sidik.
Aye.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Next, we have an ordinance approving the petition of the village of Beach Park for a zoning map amendment from O1 Restricted Office District to CS Commercial Service District at 12454, 12424, 12395, 12360, and 12336 Wadsworth Road. The purpose of the map amendment is to provide a change of the zoning for these properties on Wadsworth Road to better reflect the actual and potential uses of the property. These properties are all located east of the MTT Building, which is a similar use in Milwaukee, and are across from the airport, where they are building new hangars at the current time. The village has, and is a location for many small businesses, and many require the CS Commercial Service District zoning in which to operate. This will allow for those businesses to operate. This, this still is the Green Bay Road, Wadsworth Road Overlay District. And again, this also is designed to promote and increase economic development, and was also designated for approval by the Building Planning and Zoning Committee, and I entertain it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion by Trusty Wells.
Second.
Second by Trusty, what's your name, Addison, sorry?
Still.
Discussion? Now, these properties are a mixture of those uses already, some carryover. One of them, for sure, has probably been 60 years in a similar use without being zoned that way, so it's good to get that cleaned up. Roll call, please.
Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Trusty Millard.
Aye.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Trusty Sidik.
Aye.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Next, we have for your consideration, an ordinance amending the village's Beach Park zoning code to address pre-existing single-family residential dwellings in the Green Bay Wadsworth Road Corridor Overlay District and the CS Commercial Service District. The purpose of this text amendment ordinance is to allow for pre-existing single-family homes, houses on the properties that were just rezoned from O1 Restricted Office to CS Commercial Service to remain as such. There currently are three single-family homes on the three separate parcels, and again, this is also in line with the promotion of increased economic development, and was also designated for approval by the Building Planning and Zoning Committee. It also is, I entertain it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion by Trusty Wells.
Second.
Second by Trusty Miller, discussion? See, you fix one thing, you break something else, then you gotta fix that. All right, roll call, please.
Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Trusty Millard.
Aye.
Trusty Addison.
Aye.
Trusty Sidik.
Aye.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries, that is ordinance 33. I apologize if I'm not reading them off, I hope you're keeping your own tally here. All right.
There's a clerk for that.
Next, we have for your consideration, an ordinance providing for the regulation and registration of defined and vacant properties and buildings within the village. Purpose of this ordinance is to provide for the regulation and registration of defined vacant properties and buildings within the village. It is a three-year priority that has been brought up every year in our yearly priority session, that it is the desire of the village trustees to ensure that the properties within the village are properly maintained, so that they do not negatively impact other properties in the village, and create deterioration of our neighborhood. It is noted that there will be another recession, it's just a matter of, we don't know exactly when. Vacant structures and buildings are often subject to deterioration, abuse, trespass, and unintentional uses, which can, or does threaten the safety of the persons within the vicinity. Additionally, they lead to decline in community property values, create nuisances, lead to general decreased neighborhood aesthetics, create conditions that invite criminal activity and foster an unsafe and unhealthy environment. One proactive way to control the properties is through code enforcement, the one tool that we currently do not have in our toolbox, and is a proactive regulation and registration of the defined and vacant properties and buildings within the village. And we like to entertain it in the form of a motion as well, sir.
We have a motion by Trusty Wells.
Second.
Second by Trusty Miller, discussion?
Yes, I do. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One, is a general one, and that is, in the case of properties that have reverted to county through tax laws, would the county then be subject to this registration process? We're gonna start charging them $300 twice a year?
You refer to the county.
If I don't pay my taxes, and the county takes over the property, and then it's subject to tax sale.
It would be whoever buys the taxes.
At that point, yeah, once that transit, as we've been finding, but in the interim.
Ideally, we would be on it prior to that point, but, yeah, that's an interesting question.
County never owns the property, right?
They don't own it.
No.
It's, it goes from 2, yeah, so, yeah. That's a good question there is.
So, they just hold it in the interim?
They don't hold it.
They sell the taxes, and ultimately, the title transfers from the owner to the tax buyer through the, through that process. The county simply facilitates that process.
I see.
They'll never be found in the chain of title.
And I apologize, before we go any further, there were some changes that were made to the content, in addition to what's actually in your packet. Do we have those?
Yeah, they're on the desk.
Okay, that's the one that's probably sitting right next to me, so.
That's the one, so we can all read this.
Actually, for your edification.
Oh, good.
If you look, this is a marked-up drawing, the words in blue are the changes from the version that we have. So, by way of quick explanation, snow removal was removed from, was struck from the utilities and services in a definition of the things that might automatically indicate vacancy. So, snow removal was struck, moving all the way forward to 4, section 4, subparagraph A, we changed from 10 days for an order to notify, from 10 to 90 days, to, or within 90 days of assuming ownership, whichever is later, so, to register the property. So, there's a more generous timeframe to get the registration done. We similarly changed the initial registration under C from 10 days to 60 days, and then, again, in item E, we went from 10 days to 30 days after the date of transfer. So, it was a little loosening of the timelines, and then, in section 6, paragraph C, we struck watering and irrigation from the maintenance, required maintenance, or maintenance lacking, because obviously that.
Because I never water mine.
Yeah, I don't water mine, or didn't anyway. So, I believe that was, there was a change of, under certificate of occupancy, we added the words, or other village ordinance under certificate of occupancy. So, that was the gist of, so, I wanted, just wanted to make sure we're all on the right version, so I think that was it. So, we have a motion in a second, and.
I did have a couple of other questions.
We were gonna, yes, sorry, there.
I'm looking at page 2, 1, 2, 3, the fourth whereas, this third line from the bottom, it says "from allowing their property," et cetera. I don't know what noun goes with that verb. It's prevent them from allowing, perhaps? Or what verb, I'm sorry, goes with that? If you read that, it needs, I think it needs the word "prevent them from allowing," or be prevented from allowing.
You're saying the "and" gets lost there. Did I mention that I didn't do really well in the noun and verb class? I'm glad the kids are gone, so they don't have to see that side of me.
Well, and I almost need magnificent strong words to watch, to read this.
I think you're right, so.
The words are.
Yeah, "to prevent from allowing," is that?
Something of that nature, I wouldn't use that, that wouldn't be my original word choice, but it works.
To prevent them from allowing, okay.
Something along that line.
Did we conjugate the adjectives properly, or whatever? I'm sorry.
I don't, I didn't take Latin.
Mayor, may I ask where that, where that changes, please?
You're on the whereas, number 4, first one down.
Fourth whereas, third line up, right, near the right side, following the strikeout, "from allowing."
Thank you. Yep. To prevent them from allowing their properties and structures, yep.
Yes, that's what it needs, "prevent."
Yep.
Yep.
So, that'll be another Scrivener Jensen.
Wait, we're not, but wait, we're not.
We're not finished. I've got a couple more. The next whereas clause, following the strikeout, the word "has" should be "have," since mayor and board are plural. And the fourth line up from the bottom, requirements of registration, I'm sorry, of registrable and vacant properties, probably that should be "on" instead of "of." Impose "on," not impose "of."
To impose registration requirements.
"On," not "of."
Of registrable and vacant.
Would be, would be my choice of words for that anyhow. Would be my choice of words for that anyhow.
The peanut gallery is reading furiously over there. No other, no other, okay, so-
You, you, hmm.
John's halfway to the kid.
How about on, how about on and/or of?
On and/or of?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just put that in every place. All right, so-
No, I think it's right. I say it's right.
So there's two. Oh, wait.
Where did you learn English?
I think it's, well, because you're saying-
Are you a native English speaker?
I actually majored in English.
Watch out, watch out.
Bring out the swords.
To impose registration requirements of registri-
I mean, it is registrable.
Yeah.
Right, if I may, I don't know which way is right, to be honest with you, but the, that particular page is not a codified section of the code.
Oh, well.
And so the whereas is really a vehicle to get to the section 1521100, and so certainly that's the section that really matters the most, if I can say it that way.
Okay, so we have a split decision.
You know what, I-
Can you let that one live?
She's an English major, I have to.
Let it go.
And I already admit, I failed that, so I'm not gonna weigh in on this.
Got more?
I just have one question, that it's not a Scrivener thing, it's just an understanding thing. I'm looking at page 10 of the document.
10?
Page 10, paragraph K.
Paragraph K.
We talk about refusing to allow them to register, denying their registration, if they owe us money.
Yes.
Okay. Why in the world, if I'm a negligent owner of a piece of property, would I fight to give this village $300 to register my property if I already owe them money?
You're looking at, help me out-
K, K is in-
The struck-out K, or the new K?
The-
Sorry.
It's not, on page 10, there's only one K.
Okay, then we don't have the current version. Grab the other one, sorry.
This, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, K, there's a red, a red letter K with the new.
Oh, that one might have got-
It's, the whole thing is gone.
It continues on the next page.
But the old K has been struck.
The old K is gone. There's a new K.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Then as Roseanne, Roseanne O'Dana would say, never mind.
Okay.
I think, oh no, I had one more question. Oh, and that is, this is one definition, page 13, and elsewhere, we reference the term blighted, and we never defined it. We all know what it is, it's kinda like obscenity, but you'd still have to define it.
Is it, is blight defined in the-
I didn't see it in the, I looked back in the definition, I didn't see it.
The- I was wondering if there was an overriding definition of blight in the municipal code that we might have been referencing, and if it's not, then maybe we need an ordinance change to add blighted to the municipal code.
Or just add a line, if there's any word that lacks a definition, to Google it.
Google. A Wikipedia.
You gotta be careful, when you go to Google, there's-
Wikipedia.
You might-
And pick the third one from the top.
Yeah, there's gotta be, I'm wrestling over which Google definition is right.
Well, it, I don't know, I know it's a little nitpicky, but what does blighted mean to, you know, rundown, ramshackle, dilapidated, what adjective do you wanna use?
And you were referring to the-
It appears in a couple of places, but this is the first one I came across.
Okay.
I mean, the term blight has a fairly common meaning, right? I mean, I'm not sure you have to define every word in ordinance, you know?
No, but if it's, if you're accusing me of having a blighted property, you better be able to tell me what that means.
I mean, the TIF Act refers to blight in the state statute, and I'm trying to think through, if they define it, we could grab that definition, if need be, but there are many words in here that were, were not defined.
As Bill Clinton would say, the definition of is.
Is, is, is.
Correct about this, Tim?
Right.
And vacant property wasn't defined.
Okay.
We do not have definitions of blight.
Okay. Might I make a recommendation that we would consider a modification to the ordinance, to the, we could either use the village code definitions, or we could add a definition of blight. Our attorney is pecking away rapidly on Google, go figure.
Of course.
Going to the TIF Act, see what the state legislature has told us. Yeah.
What blight means.
There's a suitable-
Let's see here, 65.
This is why he gets the big bucks, he brought the laptop.
Got it to work, that's not always easy. TIF Act.
That's why he brings an assistant, to get the laptop to work.
He's going mad over it, too. It's a race to see who can get to it.
Blighted, so the word blighted comes up multiple times in the TIF Act. Let's see if it's defined. Not seen it defined yet. We can come up with a definition, though.
The other, I mean, or we just strike the word blight entirely, and that doesn't become a part of the, you know, the, on section 14, for example, instead of saying where the property has become vacant or blighted, you would just remove the word blighted if it's been-
I've got, I found it in the TIF Act. It's very long. There are many factors that go into blight. To qualify as a blighted area, there can be dilapidation, obsolescence-
Oh, God, more definitions.
-deterioration, and each one has a definition, you're right. Presence of structures below minimum code standards, illegal use of individual structures, excessive vacancies, lack of ventilation, light, or sanitary inadequate utilities, excessive land coverage, and overcrowding of structures and community facilities, boy, it keeps going, deleterious land use or layout, deleterious.
Oh, you mean, oh, you mean blight?
Uh, blight.
I wasn't understanding what you were saying, now I know.
13, 13 categories.
Oh, boy.
So-
Could reference the TIF Act.
Oh, God. Then we get into that. I do concede that, as our counsel says, there are many words in here that do not have a formal definition. I don't know how we resolve this without addressing them. You know, there are some definitions built in, there are some that aren't, and-
Oh, is this in our TIP code that you just read that from?
Yes. No, I read, that's state law, that's the state law.
Well, we have it in ours, too.
Well, no, I understand, what I'm thinking is, if we have it elsewhere, anywhere in village code, that we could reference, just to use that, could reference that term.
Could, for the sake of expedience for tonight, we agree to have staff do a little digging, and if we don't have an actual definition-
Just have one vote here, Mayor, yeah.
No, I respect, I respect your diligence here. I don't want to discourage that at any mean, and we do want the best ordinances that we can, we can put forth.
Well, and John can't leave until this is resolved.
Well, and Molly's not here, so-
They don't pay by the hour, so we're fine.
Okay, so if we can, if we can-
Absolutely, I just, I'd be more comfortable if we were to define that, particularly since there's a penalty attached to that word.
And can we define it by making it reference something else that we currently have in our code?
If our, if our code already addresses it, then I think that definition would be implied. If it doesn't address it, we could even go to the, back to the municipal code and add it anywhere, as long as it's defined and understood. I wonder if the property maintenance code might address the term there, and that might be enough to just reference back then. So-
Now, before we leave this, I have one question regarding CO on page 16. I know it's revised, but the question's still for Jermaine. And in all of these categories of blight, or vacant, or whatever, would they all require a CO to, I mean, if I have vacant houses for sale, do I need a CO before I can put a family in there, if it's not rundown, if it's just for sale and vacant?
We do, we do an inspection, an interior inspection, if it's been vacant for six months or longer.
Okay, well, I'm familiar, having had a house built, I know you need a CO on a new house, and I suppose after a fire, or after some other catastrophe, but you need one just on change of ownership, if it's vacant in the interim?
Don't, we would still do the interior, and you would, you would get a, you would get no CO if there were significant violations in there. So would we necessarily-
Well, okay, that's half the answer. Would a CO be required if no violations are found? If it's, it's still, it's still a habitable dwelling, if it hasn't been damaged, it's just been vacant.
Right, then it would still stay that way, if we got in there and there were violations that were substantial.
Then a CO, as referenced here, wouldn't be required. That's the point I'm getting at.
I'm sorry.
This language here requires a CO before that the status can be cleared, as I've read it.
One of the things that was discussed in the Building Planning and Zoning Committee that Chairman Trustee Wells had asked for is, is that staff should develop an administrative policy, similar to what we did for the short-term rentals, a administrative policy on how this ordinance is going to be applied. It will provide guidance, not only to the village inspectors that are gonna be tasked with administering this registration program, but it'll also provide guidance to the residents or property owners which have the vacant or for the foreclosed property. So I think that that administrative policy that he asked to come back to the Building Planning and Zoning Committee will address all of those issues or concerns that you're specifically bringing up.
Are we better off tabling this item until we can get this worked out?
Jerry, if I could ask a clarifying point, I think trustee Jensen was attempting to ask, if a house is, the village code, as it stands today, if a house has been vacant for six months, do we require that inspection?
We have an interior and an exterior inspection.
Okay, and do we issue a certificate of occupancy after that inspection, or is it just, the inspection is done and found to be satisfactory and-
It's either found to be satisfactory, or we issue them a certificate that says it's not satisfactory and you can't occupy.
Okay, so it's an occupancy inspection, so this is, in essence, attempting to mirror that policy, is that fair?
It's not, yeah, it's not any different than what we're already doing.
This seems to require-
Yeah, and so trustee Jensen's language question here is that the CO would be required before occupancy would be granted by the code official in payment of full fees, et cetera. So, of course, putting the word "may be required" leads to ambiguity and back to policy and procedure.
Well, perhaps you could say "if required," or "as required." If required, a CO will be grant, will be required, not that will be issued.
What we're leading to is the inspection, do we, um, just trying to understand if we're, if we're not setting it apart from the existing code, if it's even necessary to address it here, if it's already part of our municipal code, or our property maintenance code, or-
I might be able to strike this entirely.
I'm just wondering about that, is there any thought from the peanut gallery on that direction?
Do you have any issue with section 11?
If, if we already require an inspection that may or may not result in the CO, then this becomes a matter, a kind of a moot point, then, if we're not trying to enhance that in any way?
I think, Mayor, all we're trying to do here is to withhold the CO until the fees are paid. And if that's the case, the language could be somewhat adjusted to say that.
Right, and maybe that is the bigger question, rather than, so the certificate of occupancy is permission to live in the home, but we're not issuing it at every, at every junction where somebody is about to move into a home. We're not doing inspections on homes that just sell and the like.
We're required.
So I just wanna make sure we're focused back to what we're trying to accomplish. We don't want somebody getting permission to move into the vacant house if they haven't paid all the fees.
Right, right.
Okay, so-
So you could say something like, where CO is required, it cannot, will not be issued until all fees are paid, something along that line.
Yep, and we could do that. So a certificate of occupancy, as required, before occupancy, or if required, before occupancy will be granted by the code official in payment of full fees.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so, as opposed to will be, we would be just putting in "as required," is that?
As required, if required, where required.
If required.
Maybe where required.
Where required. Okay.
Okay.
Where? Where?
Yeah, or what about an occupancy inspection will be required before occupancy will be allowed by the code official, or does that make it worse?
Jerry, how you do it?
Inspection is really what the village is, ultimate intent of that section was, and so if it's, if it's a matter of adding one of those two words, the inspection is the word that matters more.
And then you change the title of the section?
So it's a certificate of occupancy inspection.
Change the title of the section from certificate of occupancy to-
Occupancy inspection.
Occupancy inspection.
Thank you.
But you're still gonna withhold occupancy until the fees are paid.
So an occupancy inspection will be required?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Will be or maybe?
That is, they're saying the inspection is the important part, so the occupancy inspection will be-
Not the certificate, just the occupancy.
Required, so be striking a certificate of occupancy and putting in an occupancy inspection will be required before occupancy will be granted.
And under those circumstances, if Jerry finds any conditions that render something inhabitable, property inhabitable-
Yep.
...then occupancy wouldn't be allowed, and that flows from-
Yep.
-other authority that he has.
There would be notice of violations, unsafe, you know, red tagging, whatever would go in play.
Triggered inspection.
Okay, so we'll change the heading from number 11, we'll strike certification of, and add the word inspection after occupancy, so it'll say occupancy inspection, and we'll change the beginning words to "an occupancy inspection will be required before," okay. All right.
Thank you, I have no more objections.
So we've covered a few of them, do we need to restate the changes, or is everybody comfortable with what we've changed as we went? Comfortable?
Please.
Okay, we have a motion, was by trustee Wells.
Correct.
And are you accepting the changes?
Change language?
Yes.
As stated.
As stated, okay. And our second?
I concur.
We have a concurrence on our second, so both considered amended. Any other discussion on the ordinance as presented?
Mr. Mayor, one other item?
Yes.
I think we also discussed the implementation of appeals process.
Yes, that is included in, in the, please point me to the section. I know it's in here.
That's the K, that's the red K that was referenced earlier on page 10.
Thank you. Bottom of page 10, a property owner may appeal the requirement for property registration requirement. Appeal must be in writing and filed with the community development director within 10 days following the notification, and it goes on to, as to what the appeal process looks like. So we did add that in at the committee's request. All right, other discussion? Who says democracy is dead? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries, that is ordinance 34. I just had to find my place again, this is a long one. What was the, when were we taking the nap?
I told you we were gonna need another reset.
And last, and last but not least, we are revolution, effort for your consideration revolution, authorizing execution of an agreement between the Village of Beach Park and Property Registration Champions LLC, and I'd like to entertain that in the form of a motion as well.
We have a motion by trustee Wells.
Second.
Second by trustee Miller. Discussion.
This also is one of the new attachments that you have in front of you, and if I may, I'll just jump in and highlight the changes from the packet. All of the highlights are what I consider to be improvements, essentially, ProChamp agreed to- agreed to, to provide the village a 30-day opt-out for no cause, and so that's been included in the agreement, so should this ordinance not work, the village has the ability to separate, really without, without cause, basically. So that's, in a nutshell, the significant change from what you had in your packet.
I have to say that any time an organization is willing to give a 30-day opt-out with no cause, it tells me that they believe what they're doing is gonna, is gonna sell because...
Well, it was initially 36 months, was it not?
Yes, it was.
So this is a huge improvement.
Yep.
They, they came down to two years, and I was willing to take that, but this is a whole lot better.
Yep, yep, good. The discussion.
I just think this is a good face gesture on their part.
Yep. Very good. Roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Anderson?
Aye.
Trustee Siddick?
Aye.
Trustee Wells?
Aye.
And that is resolution number 23. Now, moving to Trustee Jensen.
Yeah, I've got a couple resolutions which I, I encourage my colleagues here to pick at. The, the first one is a resolution amending certain purchasing provisions as official village policy. And what this is, is some time ago, we amended our purchasing policy to authorize the administrator to purchase up to $25,000, it was previously $10,000, without prior approval of the village board, and that was a recognition of our, of our trust and confidence in, in our current administrator. And no doubt, sometime down the road, we'll, we'll revisit this and change it back, but in the interim, we'd like to adjust it so that we have a little bit better, tighter control on the purse strings until we see what kind of replacement. We're hoping for a clone, but we don't know if we're gonna get, if we're gonna get another one, so.
He's got like 12 brothers, so there's often a chance.
Line 'em up, John. Okay, so that, that is, that is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Jensen and a second by Trustee Miller. This would be resolution 24, discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
I with reservation that we even have to do it.
Trustee Anderson?
Aye.
Trustee Siddick?
Aye.
Trustee Wells?
Aye.
Motion carries. And you have one more?
The second one I have, yes, Mayor, this one's a resolution authorizing, and this is a motion, but, resolution authorizing the Village of Beach Park to enter into a contract for collection services with Municipal Collection Services, Inc., MCSI, and this was discussed in, in finance. Certainly all of us have reservations about what, I don't think I've ever had a collection agent after me, but I know people who have, and it's not a pleasant thing, and we're gonna make sure that, that we get a reputable company that treats our residents respectfully when they fall in arrears, for whatever reason, and so we had some, some concerns about that. Staff has done some checking of, of references, which came back positive, and they did reduce their term, by the way, we asked for a reduction term in case we're not happy with their services. Unfortunately, they're not down to 30 days, they're down to 24 months from 36 months. So that, I'm a little, I have some misgivings, but we'll see how it goes again, the references did check, check out well. So there's my motion and explanation.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Jensen, a second by Trustee Miller. Discussion. It's a shame that we have to have a collection program at all, but it's amazing how much work and time goes into this on the staff level, and how big some of these amounts get to be.
And it's not fair to, to residents that pay on time.
Right.
And, and it's not fair to staff to have to constantly make these calls and pester these people, I think it's, this is an appropriate step to take.
And it's a very real cost, even in that, even if they collected 100% of what was owed, that's a very real cost that should be completely unnecessary, but there it is. So, all right, any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Anderson?
Aye.
Trustee Siddick?
Aye.
Trustee Wells?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, hey, I finally get to talk, oh wait. Um, I have a motion, first of all, we have a resolution in front of you that is the final resolution in the packet, it is a resolution appointing the community development director, Gerald Nelson, as the interim administrator for the Village of Beach Park. Before I get into the, the wheres and whys force, in section two, in the heading, even though I looked at it like three different times when John told me that there was a typo, I didn't read the headline. The, the heading says, "Appointment of zoning administrator," it needs to say interim administrator. Anybody else not seeing that? Because I had to look at it a lot to see it.
We're all tired.
Where are you talking, up top?
Section two.
Towards the bottom.
Oh, section two, right middle.
Appointment of zoning administrator.
Yeah, see it.
That should say appointment of village, interim village administrator, or interim administrator, yep. All right, so, on that note, I would make a motion, actually, I will, I'll ask for a motion for this resolution, do we have such a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion by Trustee Jensen? It's awful quiet in here.
Second.
Second by Trustee Anderson?
He doesn't want to go home tonight.
By way of discussion, we have numerous people in our administrative leadership team that I think would do a fine job, and so my challenge was to select one from that team, and, and my selection of Jerry is based largely on his tenure with your village, as well as with his ability to communicate directly with me, and by directly, sometimes I mean directly, sometimes I, I need to be told things that aren't easy to tell, and Jerry doesn't seem to have any problem at all doing that, so. So on that note, I'm asking for your confirmation of that appointment, and would be willing to hear any conversation. All right, there being none? Roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Anderson?
Aye.
Trustee Siddick?
Aye.
Trustee Wells?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Jerry, I think.
I think.
I've got two hats to wear. Twice the work for the same pay.
I believe that's his third hat.
I think so, too.
That's his fourth hat.
Earlier, under new business here, before, before I forget, earlier, I kind of took the bully pulpit and shared my thoughts and, and comments about our departing administrator, and I just wanted to give the board an opportunity, if, if anyone feels strongly either to say good riddance, or best of luck, or whatever it might be. So speak freely if anyone has.
Well, I think we all knew this day was gonna come, although we didn't realize it was going to come right now, you know, it came as maybe a surprise, a shock, combination of things, and I, I just want to say that in all of John's tenure here, at no time did I think he had anything but the best interests of this village at heart, with all the things that he's accomplished, I know a lot of them weren't easy, and several of them were first-time accomplishments for this village, and that is one of the qualities in him that I appreciated the most. So congratulations, John.
Thank you.
And we will miss you.
I'd like to echo a lot of the things that, that the mayor said earlier, I was, I was really pleased to see that John fit into the culture here, the can-do, make-do culture, and fostered that among the staff to, to make do with, with the limited resources that we have available. He did that, and he even, he even improved upon that with the shared services with our neighbors, with bringing some of the, some of the work that had been hired out to consultants, bringing it back into the village and doing it in-house, and, and that's been a big help, and, and has, has set the tone, I think, all the way down for the entire staff, so I, I appreciate that, and I hope we can, we can find someone that will follow in his footsteps. It's, it's not gonna be easy.
No.
Good luck to you, and I'm, I'm surprised you stayed this long. I'm, I'm glad we got seven good years on you.
I had quite a few things prepared, but when I showed it to John, he made me promise not to read them, so we wouldn't both cry.
Oh, my goodness.
So that, that, that should speak volumes.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate, not just an administrator, but I think we've had a friendship. He's never had a problem hanging out with us at weekend activities and things that he certainly wasn't required to be at, and, yes, I think that was kind of fun. He did run my foot over with a golf cart once, but that's fine.
Is the golf cart okay?
Yeah, the airbag went off and everything. No, but thank, thank you, it's, it's been fun, we, I think we've learned a lot from one another.
Thank you so much, John, for all your help and your dedication to us and the village residents, really appreciate that, and I wish you the absolute best in your future. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss you, young man, you're a very dedicated trooper, you've brought the village a long ways in a number of different ways, you have a very humble spirit and a very dedicated spirit, and I've seen you work long and hard, when everyone else is going home, you're still burning at midnight all, and that's a sign of a young man who's gonna be successful, no matter whether it's here in Beach Park, or what's in Decatur, Illinois, or any other part of the world there, so I wish you much success, much gratitude from me and my fellow board members and the mayor, and again, wish you all the best, you and your family, and good luck with your next newborn.
Little Mark O'Kinsef, I believe, is that?
I, John, John had kind of, in his, in his own quiet little way, kind of tried to get me to, like, not do all this tonight, I think he would, his exact words were something I, I kind of liked to just kind of drift away and just fade, kind of fade away, and I said, "That's nice, that's not gonna happen." So I think we've done a proper job of, of embarrassing him tonight, and it's an embarrassment that was well-deserved, you, you've, I'm gonna miss you terribly, you've been a good friend, and, and so I expect I'll have to find out where Decatur is or something, and come down and visit one of these.
Yeah, road trip to a board meeting.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, can we make comments from the, from the citizens?
Yeah, do we have to be citizens to make comments?
Speaking of which?
Before you move on from new business, I just wanted to, to address our folks that came here tonight, I hope you come back, this is the longest meeting we've had ever, they're usually about 15 minutes, honest, honest, but if you get here by 7:15, you missed it, so, so don't, don't let this discourage you from coming.
But, most of them don't have cake, so.
True, that's true. Thank you, that's all right, Mayor.
Well, speaking of citizens wishing to address the board, I know we've got at least one here tonight that wants to, and, and patience is a virtue, and, and you got a double dose of it tonight, I'm afraid. Anyone that would wish to come address the board, please come to the, the podium, let us know your name and state your case. Come right up over here, sure.
There's a microphone there that sort of works?
It looks like it's on. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's on.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, just a few days ago, one of my neighbor says to me, and he's, "I'm sorry, I got this wrong, my name is Linville Thompson. Let me tell you a little about myself, I came down from the Jamaica Police Department, where was the bodyguard of the two prime ministers, I was also became the second in charge of the general penitentiary, a tailor shop, as I'm, I'm also a designer. I came here and I rose from the ranks in each carbon transit authority to assistant manager. My wife is there, she came down from, after 35 years in this court system with five degrees, two of them are masters, and not only that, but we have 33 years of marriage."
That's the best accomplishment right there.
The reason why, yes, so let me go back and say, and he says to me, "I am leaving Beach Park because it is too much, and probably, for me, I think, too much is too much. My address is 399-27 Acworth Lane, but I also, I never, this good lady here is my friend. Every time, we, we have fun at City Hall here, and he says to me, "I'm leaving. If you go, I'm on the north, inside the north beach park. There are old chairs, old couches, old beds thrown out, I see homes right there now as I stand here, no garage door broke down. 15 years ago, when I came here to live here, from Skokie, it wasn't like this." I, I don't know how, what people are, but it is bad, and I'm going to ask Mr. Mayor, please, sir, if you could just put a note on this, that, I would like to see, owing to the fact that I came down from the security department, I would like even to see a sheriff just park outside for two minutes. According to my fear back, when I come out of the house, I have to go around on the sidewalk and do like this, to go in my mailbox, that means I cannot get all the mail out of it. Listen, I'm 81 years old, I can go every minute to the post office to collect my mail, it's not right.
So when, when you say there's the furniture and everything that's out there?
On, on the sidewalks.
Right, and, and this is, this is from your neighbor that left?
No, not from my neighbor, the people on the hall, in there.
On, on Acworth, on your street?
On my street.
Okay.
And my address is 399-27 Acworth.
Yep.
You see, and, and people, and even around on the other street, and bucks burn, on, on, it's, it's, I, that is not me.
Right, right.
And I'm asking you, first time, I would see a Beach Park truck?
Yep.
Drove by, not, not anymore. You see, I've seen grass growing in the street, you know, the garbage truck sometimes comes Saturday morning, it's disgusting.
Yep.
So I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, please, if you could make a note of this for me?
Yes, it's considered noted, we have code enforcement in the room, as well as our community development director and our public works director are all hearing what you're saying, and I'm sure your, your address has been written down several times, so we'll, we'll be out there and we'll have a look at it tomorrow and see what we can find. I'm sorry to hear that that's going on in that neighborhood, that's not right.
God bless.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, oh, here we go, here we go.
Now we get the real story.
My name is Doreen Thompson, and I'm not going to go through all of what he said, but I just want to say to the board, you know, Mr. Mayor, and everybody there, that, over in the Heatherstone Homes where we live? We feel like we are the rejected child, or children, on that side of the?
On the north side?
Yes, yes, because we feel that most of the things that are happening in the, over younger, townhomes? We don't get some of those benefits, we do, I, I don't know if they pay the same assessment fee like we do? Or, I don't know, but we just feel that way, and many of our residents in our area feel that it's a waste of time to come to the meeting. Now, we've been here since, what, minutes to seven, because, and the good little lady over there said, you know, she noticed that I was screaming like a little child in my chair there, and, you know, gave me her card so I could talk with her if, if we felt that we needed to leave, but I said, "Since we were here this long, well, I'm not gonna leave, we're just gonna..."
Well, you, you got to the best part, so.
The best for last, and, and so the residents over in the single-family homes?
Yes.
Felt that we don't need to be here, because we are not being heard, and a couple years ago, I think we came to one of the meetings and we... years ago, I think we came to one of the meetings, and we had, we talked about getting a sign for, over there. We don't know what happened, what happened to all that money, what, is there something that, that is still being considered so that we can at least, you know, somebody can recognize?
I remember the sign, that was the homeowners association that was asking about putting the sign out?
Right, the homeowner, there is a, a, there's, I believe what, what's being described is, is a separation between north of Major portion of the Cambridge subdivision and the southern half of the Cambridge subdivision, and the HOA did have a discussion, believe it was in probably twenty-fifteen or twenty-sixteen now, where there was a request for adding a community entrance sign similar to what they have on, on Wadsworth Road, north off of Major. I honestly don't know where the conversation went. I know we did at the time, we looked at the subdivision regulation or the annexation agreement and things like that, but I, my assumption is it came down to the cost and the money, and that's why the.
So, so the homeowners association would be the one that would, would apply for the permit and have the money to put the sign in, and apparently, they did approach the village about what would be required, but we haven't heard anything ourselves either.
So, then we would like to know, then, what happened to the, to this money that we have paid, as, you know, as people over there to have those things done?
So, depending on which money you're talking about, are these the, the homeowners association dues that you pay?
Yes.
The fees, then the management company and the homeowners association board have control of those funds?
So, can someone from this board, you know, contact, who does the contacting, you know, so that we can know what happened?
So, so the structure of the homeowners association, who, who puts the, the board members and the homeowners association in, do they run for office? How does that work?
They're elected.
So, so they're elected to by the, by the residents of the homeowners association? I don't know what the term is or how, they're, they're a board similar to us in that they have, they receive revenue and they spend money for things that they're, you know, in their charter, so it may well be, and I understand what you're talking about, because you're not the first person to say, the north segment versus the south segment, I've heard that before as well. I would encourage you to talk to one of your homeowners association board members or the president of the board, but I don't, I have to admit, I don't know who that is, I used to know who that was, but I don't know who, who the city board, do we have that information, contact information?
We do have it, we, the property management company is still the same, property management, Foster Premier, Jordan Schaefer is the current one. I will say that that board is, is, it's been, it struggled with keeping a full board, and then the changeover on the board has been pretty frequent over the last few years.
Sounds like they need a, a, a board member with some specific interest.
So, could we have our own?
I'll vote for you.
Could we have our own association?
Yes.
Is it a possibility that, to take care of where we live?
Right, I understand what you're saying.
As citizens, because, I mean, if, if someone is getting all this, this money.
Right.
And so, what's happening to it?
Yep.
And people, we notice that over there, people are moving out, homes are up for sale, and.
Yep.
You know, and that makes taxes go up, and we're thinking that maybe eventually, we like it, but.
Right.
Maybe eventually, we might have to go back to Skokie where we're from, because.
Well, we don't want you to leave.
But with everything going on, and I figure that the first time, the person in charge used to come around.
Yes.
I remember once, our garage door, the landscaping person, they hit it, and we had to, we had to change it.
Right.
Because the person was adamant, you've got, it does nothing for your community, so we had to do that.
Yep.
And now we see, like he's, my husband said, we have a broken-down garage door, that's what's been there for, who knows? We have garbage on the street, people take, they don't adhere to the, the May pickup that, or twice a year pickup that you guys, you have these chairs and TVs and all that good stuff on this sidewalk, and, and I mean, and just.
Might I suggest that the nice young lady that gave you her business card would be a great resource to, that's Lisa, she's our assistant village administrator. Lisa has access to the information to contact not only the management company, but to get the members, your neighbors, in the, in the subdivision that are on that board, to get their names and contact information for you, to reach out to them, because they're the only ones that can answer your questions directly. We don't have any authority over them as a village board, they're a separate entity. You know, we certainly can address code problems, as were mentioned today, debris in the street and, and the sidewalks and broken, you know, property maintenance issues, we can ticket people for that, but the homeowners association's strength is that they're your neighbors, and when they come knocking on your door and say, "You need to fix your garage door," that's personal, that's somebody that's, you know, in the same situation as you are. If we send a code enforcement person over, you know, we can accomplish the same thing, we can say, "You got to fix this broken," fill in the blank, but we don't have the, the same kind of authority that the homeowners association does in regulations and the like, so.
So, they're not accountable to anybody?
Well, they're accountable to the people that elect them.
So, we wanted the board.
Yeah.
Because we think that it's the city, we wanted you to hear and to.
Sure.
We, we've said that before, but we wanted to be aware, because we are part of the community, we are part of the village.
Yep, yep, yep.
And if that is broken down, then it speaks about the village, too, because.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're taking care about, taking care of this section.
Yep.
And this one is, and we are all paying the same taxes, we are all.
Yep.
You know, then, then that's not fair, that's.
Right, well, you, and you're paying dues to the association, and those board members have a responsibility to you as a dues-paying member of the association to be serving you, just like we have a responsibility to our residents to serve them in, in the larger sense, and you're one of them, but they're, they're, as you say, "What happened to my money?" They have it, or at least they had it, they collected it, what happened to it from there, only they can answer. We don't see their budgets or their books or anything else.
That's amazing, that you're not accountable to anybody.
Yeah.
No wonder we're not getting the service.
This is our village attorney, he wanted to add.
Your property is governed by a declaration of covenants, there, there's a set of rules out there that you should get a hold of, and you should be able to get that from the management company. That set of rules governs what, how your association is run and what your board is supposed to be doing, so I would encourage you to ask the management company for the, a copy of the declaration of covenants. That's a good start, because with that, you could start to identify what it is that the, the board is not doing, and, and your management company is usually a pretty good resource to help you with that, so you're, you're governed by this, this document, and you had, you had asked if you could form your own association. The answer is no. You're governed by a document that sets up an HOA and a board, those are the rules that you have to live by. Now, if, if they're not doing their job, homeowners can file suit against the board, but it truly is, it truly is a private property matter. What, what the village can get involved in is code enforcement, just like in your, in your neighborhood and the rest of the village. The village has a, a code enforcement responsibility and can help in that regard, but as far as what your board is doing and whether or not your board is following its rules, that truly is a private property matter that you can dig into, but you're going to need some resources to do that, and I'd get those rules.
I think you would be an excellent homeowners association board member.
Um, maybe, but.
Yep, yep, well, you certainly.
Because you, you actually seem to care about what's going on out there, so that's, that's a big step. John said they're having a hard time filling the seats on the board, I'm not, I don't even know how many people are on the board, but if there's a vacancy, we don't get to vote, but I would sign your petition if. You don't live there. No, I can't say, okay.
Thank you very much, sir. One last thing is, with, with winter on the horizon, and the snow plowing, I don't know if it's from the city, but, you know, it's so difficult, once you've plowed your driveway and cleaned it up very nicely, and the plow truck comes, and they drive so fast, and they block it up. It's all blocked up, again, and you have to go back. I love snow, but I love to do it, but I had to go to the doctor after, I, I.
Yep.
Hurt my back doing it, because he, he doesn't do it.
Yep.
So, I do, my son and I, we like to do that, that's my.
Yep.
We're fixed, but, so, is there anything that could be done, you know, you know, in the drivers of the truck, we know they have a lot to do and all of that, but when I spend an hour, and I like my driveway really, really clean, I salt it and I do all the good stuff, I do the sidewalk, because I know I'm responsible for that, and do all that, and so, when they come and they block it up, you know, that's, I don't know what they can do about that, if there's anything.
It is, it is truly one of the, the harder balances to make because of the fact that, as you say, they've got a lot of miles to cover of road, and, and by no way is this an excuse, but when the driveways are close together, the snow has to go somewhere, and that's the hard reality. That we do train our drivers, and we do talk about this with our drivers, and we have a new public works director, the second to last on the end, that's Adrian, and he is, he works with our public works crews and staff, and, and he's listening to what you're saying here as well, and, yeah, you're certainly not the first and, and won't be the last to bring this up, and I've heard stories about people that were in their driveway and were actively shoveling, and the truck was able to stop and angle his plow and move a little bit and that, but imagine if he did that for every driveway, yeah, I mean, he, he would, he'd be out there all night.
Well, see, I clean my soul.
I know, I know.
He doesn't have to really.
And then there are those that don't do much, yep, so, no, I appreciate, and, and Adrian will be, that'll be a topic of discussion, so.
Okay, so, here, here would be a friend of yours.
There you go, there you go.
But I'm just speaking on behalf of my, my neighbors and.
Yep.
Those who live.
Yep.
If, now that we know, we thought that, you know, you guys had, but now that I know I need to get that from them, and I know they're not accountable to you.
Yep.
So, they'll have to be accountable to us.
Yes, yes, exactly, you've got that.
And we will do what we need to do.
You've got that right.
Because we know we have to pay those, come February, we have to pay the association fee, and what is that being used for?
Right.
Who knows, we don't see a thing happening.
I would, I would want to know the answer, if I was.
They clean up over the other side, we have to do our landscaping.
Yep.
They do, it's not, it's just not fair, but anyway, thank you for listening, and.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your.
Sure.
Suggestion, and.
Yep, anytime.
When it happens, I'll come back to this meeting and let you know.
There you go.
Because we are not going to let this slide.
Good.
And please, if we could have some light on Major, it's really dark.
Uh, we've been discussing that as well.
We've talked about that, too.
Yep, we've been discussing that as well. Thank you.
And, you know, when Adrian was hired, we made sure he had a shovel.
Oh.
You can call him personally.
I will definitely do.
He's got two shoves.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wish to speak tonight? No? Then, as I look, I think we ran out of stuff, there's only one thing left, we don't have cause for an executive session, so we're down to adjourn.
Might I offer a motion to adjourn, mayor?
We have a motion by trustee Jensen.
Second.
We have a second by trustee Anderson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
It is.
That, that was an I.
Trustee Wells.